Okay. I know everyone's going to give each other grace because I have this three different things open. So just give me two seconds, but it's all ready. Thanks to Jessica. Thank you, Jessica, who does everything she can to make sure this runs smoothly. I will now call to order the THPRD Board of Directors meeting for March 8th, 2023. Jessica, will you please take role?
Felisa Montblanco?
Here.
Barbie Minor? Is running a little late this evening. Alfredo Moreno?
Here.
Heidi Edwards?
Here.
Tia Ping?
Here.
Uh, first up, we have a proclamations and I know we have Jared Graffinauer, THPRD Adaptive and Inclusive Specialist joining us today. So let him take it away.
All right. Thank you. Um, so this is the Tuolton Hills Park and Recreation District proclamation by the Board of Directors. Whereas THPRD is committed to serving individuals of all abilities and ensuring the opportunity to play, learn and enjoy high, high quality park and recreation facilities, programs, services, and natural areas. And whereas THPRD is dedicated to removing barriers to participation, ensuring meaningful access and fostering an inclusive culture. And whereas THPRD is committed to creating awareness about developmental disabilities, teaching the importance of inclusion within every aspect of life, and to share the stories of individuals with a disability to show that a successful life is possible. And whereas about one in six children in the U.S. experience one or more developmental disability. And whereas THPRD is a leader in access for all, championing inclusion services for people of all abilities to be able to fully participate in programs and activities. Now, therefore, the Board of Directors of the Tuolton Hills Park and Recreation District do hereby declare the month of March 2023 as National Developmental Disabilities Month, and do urge all those in the Tuolton Hills Park and Recreation District to support and promote this observance, of observance. Signed this eighth day of March 2023.
Thank you so much, Jared. Uh, nice to meet you.
Yeah, you too.
Um, I know we have a Women's Proclamation Month. Uh, and my computer just hates me. That is just the day that I'm going to have today. Please give me two seconds. That'd be great.
Were we gonna wait for Barbie to do that? Oh, no, we're not. Okay, just checking.
Such thoughtfulness. Um. I don't know, but Doug is nodding.
No, we aren't. I just pulled it up.
Okay.
Well, with the lull, thank you, Jared, for the work that you do and your team with our inclusion services. It's great that we're able to offer so many opportunities and, you know, the breadth of our programming, the breadth and depth of our programming is accessible to individuals that experience disabilities or additional needs. So I'm really happy that you're here today and really happy that you are continuing such important work. So kudos to you and your entire team. So please give them a shout out from the board. We really appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank us for, thank you for, um, you know, giving us the opportunity to do those, that work. Um, I know that the, the district really supports and, um, puts an importance on that. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Heidi. I have found the proclamation. Uh, whereas the Roots of National Women's History Month began in March 1857, when women from various New York City factories staged a protest over working conditions and?
Whereas women of diverse backgrounds have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless ways and?
Whereas THPRD exists today because of the pioneering vision and spirit of a female leader, Elsie Stir, who in 1953 began a two-year effort that led to the creation of THPRD and?
Whereas because of the persistence and leaderships of Elsie Stir, a physical education teacher, mother and wife, who served on the THPRD Board of Directors for 18 years and understood the importance of dedicated park and recreation services we all enjoy today and?
Whereas THPRD has become a nationally accredited, award-winning provider of park and recreation services that employs creative, innovative, and hardworking women that are dedicated to our profession and?
Uh, I'm so glad I get this part. Whereas many women lead throughout the district from the Board of Directors, staff, uh, staff directors, senior managers, and center supervisors, and women are valued, dedicated public servants who make THPRD a better organization. Now, therefore, the Board of Directors of the Tuolton Hills Park and Recreation District does hereby declare the month of March 2023 as National Women's History Month.
Thanks so much. I think Doug has some remarks and then I have some activities and events that we're gonna, uh, highlight.
You bet. Thank you. Felisa, uh, you know, what I want to acknowledge this evening, uh, and I, I'm going to respectfully make sure the staff members are not totally surprised by my comments. But the reality is, um, uh, having just recognized National Women's History Month, uh, we spoke about the role obviously that women play within the park district. Most notably, our, our founder, Elsie Stewart, uh, was acknowledged as well. Uh, tonight as well, I want to just take a moment to really talk about, uh, the strong female leadership that we have, uh, at THPRD specifically. Uh, first and foremost, as was acknowledged, our Board of Directors and the important role that you all play, uh, for our community and for the district. But we see it within our staff as well. Uh, we just barely have completed, what, two months of 2023? And we already have, uh, pretty big news to celebrate. Uh, uniquely, we have four very important management positions that all have been filled by distinguished, accomplished female leaders who have worked for the district for some time. Uh, so I wanted to formally congratulate the following staff for their recent promotions. Uh, as you know, uh, recently, Aisha Panis was promoted to the position of Deputy General Manager. And, uh, uh, we know Aisha plays a really strong role. My right-hand person, which, uh, many of you know, with my lovely sense of humor being left-handed, that right-hand person, uh, is really critical. Uh, she plays that role wonderfully well. Uh, Lulu Balastros was recently selected as the district's first Equity and Engagement Manager. Emily Kent was named Sports and Inclusion Manager. And Kristen Smith was named Recreation Manager. So it's pretty unusual to have a high number of high-level management, uh, openings in a short period of time. Uh, but it's also just as wonderful to see that our in-house talent, uh, really, uh, shine. Uh, so to Aisha, Lulu, Emily, and Kristen, uh, congratulations. You've earned all of your promotions. Uh, we're not just happy for you, we're rooting for you. Uh, and I hope, uh, you can please forgive the little bit of surprise here, uh, this evening, but it's a wonderful tie-in with the proclamation. Uh, we're all grateful to have all of you, uh, continue your great work for the park district. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Um, at this point, my Mac has become smarter than me and I'm having a really hard time. I'm wondering if someone can share the, uh, items of that, that, um, I was technically, thank you, Heidi, thank you, Heidi.
I'm happy to. Yeah. So, um, this month, uh, THPRD will host a series of activities and events in honor of both National Developmental Disabilities Month and Women's History Month. Um, and here's just some of the highlights. Uh, the Free Adaptive Egg Hunt will take place on March 25th at Mountain View Champions Park in partnership with Autism Society of Oregon. We also have, uh, Beaverton Swim Center will host a women's-only swim on March 12th. Cedar Hills Recreation Center is facilitating projects and activities related to women's history. Conestoga Recreation and Aquatic Centers preschool and after-school programs are participating in activities to celebrate various women in STEM with a focus on inventions and chemistry. We have Harmon Swim Center hosting a women's celebration swim on March 19th. And the Athletics Center is displaying a bulletin board of women in sports with a focus on women from Oregon, Oregon schools, and professional teams. At Elsie Stir Center, we will be hosting, uh, women's clothing and accessory exchange on March 10th. At, uh, Garden Home Recreation Center, they have a photo montage of influential women in history posted in its main hallway. So lots of great things happening, uh, around the district to celebrate both National Disabilities Month as well as Women's History Month. And thank you, staff and teams, for, for participating and showcasing those opportunities to our community.
Thank you, Heidi, so, so much. And thank you to the entire organization who's finding ways to, uh, celebrate, uh, this in various ways. Uh, next up, uh, we have audience time. Um, and my understanding is, uh, we have written testimony that we have received as well as, um, a community member who'd like to give live testimony. I think that's Tom. Um, and we'll have a, uh, Heidi will do timing probably, uh, but, but welcome, Tom, and you can go ahead and provide your testimony.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
I can.
Can you see me? Or do you care to? I don't care if you see me.
Go ahead.
We can see and hear you, Tom.
Wasting time. I'll start right now. Good evening all. My name is Tom Yort, 15715, Southwest Division Street, Beaverton. I'm a member of the Friends of Cooper Mountain Nature Park. Our written testimony to the board concludes, quote, "We request that THPRD place Cooper Mountain as a line item under local share dollars in your upcoming 2023-24 budget. We are asking Washington County, Beaverton, and Tigard to do the same," unquote. Though Metro has the primary responsibility, it is looking to partner with benefiting jurisdictions in securing lands on Cooper Mountain. Hence, THPRD's local share dollars are an appropriate funding source by which the district can participate in expanding Cooper Mountain Nature Park. In short, these local commitments can leverage millions of Metro green space dollars for Cooper Mountain, which is something we really support. Also, setting aside local share dollars meshes perfectly with the intent of the 2019 Metro Parks and Nature Bond Measure. Expanding Cooper Mountain Nature Park will exponentially increase its value as home for a diversity of birds and animals, as well as rare native plants such as Oregon white oak, Oregon orchid, and pale lark spur. According to Metro, the minimum size to protect habitat and diversity is 700 acres. Cooper Mountain Nature Park now occupies only 231 acres. The park is accessible to large and diverse urban and suburban populations in Beaverton, Aloha, and Tigard totaling 200,000 to 250,000 persons. The park is closer to this population than more distant nature parks, such as Forest Park and Chehalum Ridge. Few, if any, large natural areas now exist near THPRD. They're suitable for creating a nature park. Even the opportunity to expand Cooper Mountain Nature Park will soon be lost due to the planned development of 5,000 home sites near its boundaries. Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you, Tom, so much. Um, well, I, I want to make sure that Heidi can, uh, read off, uh, the testimony we received and then we can talk a little bit about Cooper Mountain.
Should that be myself or Tia? I wasn't sure.
That's a good question.
I don't mind.
Go ahead. I know I'm late.
Heidi, if you have it up already.
Um, and I don't have it up, so.
Okay.
Just one moment. I can, you know, the joy of, uh, living in the digital world here today.
I have it. I have it. I can do it.
At some point.
Okay. I'll do it. Ready? Okay, so this is, um, from the Cooper Mountain Nature Park. Subject is Metro Bond Local Shares 23-24 Budget Request. "We wish to thank THPRD for its long and fruitful partnerships with Metro, which has greatly benefited our community over a long number of years. We appreciate that THPRD has taken the lead in our area to protect and restore habitat to create the care for parks and trails that connect our community to nature as well as building resilience in the face of climate change. Last year, THPRD received an allocation of $8,628,870 from Metro designated to support THPRD's local share projects. Subsequently, you approved four needed parks, trails, and natural area capital projects. We wish to see THPRD build further upon that success. THPRD has consistently directed attention to the need to expand the Cooper Mountain Nature Park, even when it has slipped the minds of other jurisdictions. Last October, the Friends of CMNP issued a request for action to Metro effort after it became clear that Metro's land acquisition effort in the Cooper Mountain target area urgently needs to be brought out of its moribund state. In the 20 years since the initial Metro Natural Area Bond Measure passed, only one-third of Metro's 700-acre natural area core component acquisition goal for the 5,000-acre Cooper Mountain target area has been purchased. With all but five acres purchased well prior to the opening of Cooper Mountain Nature Park in 2009, the preponderance of sensitive nature resources, air, resource areas on Cooper Mountain remain unprotected and development is on the horizon with the city of Beaverton's impending annexation of the area. Just this past April, the Metro Council restated within its 2019 Parks and Nature Bond Measure refinement plan resolutions its intentions that Cooper Mountain target area hosts a regionally significant natural area with a core component of 700 acres to support a diversity of plant and animal life and sustain key biological features. However, as previously mentioned, our progress toward the 700-acre objective has been stalled for years. Metro has indicated that it does not want to fund all the necessary acquisitions on Cooper Mountain alone. It would like to see partnering, see partnering by the benef- benefiting local jurisdictions. We recognize and appreciate that Metro must take the lead in the bond-funded acquisition of the additional land for the nature park. We likewise believe that local jurisdictions, namely Beaverton, Washington County, including Aloha, Tigard, and THPRD need to commit dollars and resources in support of the area, of the target area objectives for Cooper Mountain. And the best path of which to do this is through THPRD's dedication of a significant percentage of its local share funds to Cooper Mountain. We request that THPRD place Cooper Mountain as a line item under Metro local share dollars in your upcoming 2023-24 budget. We are asking Washington County, Beaverton, and Tigard to do the same."
Thank you, Tia. Um, just to, uh, talk a little bit about Cooper Mountain, appreciate the, the activism, the, the passion for this beautiful park. And I hope Friends of Cooper Mountain know that we love it just as much as y'all do and we are hustling. Um, my understanding is, uh, several months ago, um, we did vote on local share and where those funds would go, and we can get you that information. Um, but my understanding is those, uh, are in, in progress and, uh, Doug Monkey can provide any additional info there. Um, and I, and you'll hear in our committee liaison updates, um, some of the work that we're doing to make sure our local jurisdictions and our local leaders, uh, know just what an opportunity we have in Cooper Mountain. Uh, but really appreciate your enthusiasm and support and the, uh, keeping us accountable. Uh, and I, I promise we're, we're hustling. So thanks so much.
Yeah, really, the only thing I would add too is, is that acknowledgement that we did, uh, appropriately place a variety of different programs in front of Metro for our, uh, local share and those projects were accepted. There may be some additional funds from local share. We'll wait and see as those projects fully develop it. But unquestionably, our system development funds are, are, uh, appropriate access points as well for additional acquisition. So we will be bringing recommendations and options for the board, uh, to consider, you know, probably in the next couple of months here.
Thanks so much, Doug. Uh, so that's it for audience time. So now we have, uh, committee liaison updates. Do folks have things they'd like to share? Alfredo, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, so, um, yeah, uh, uh, speaking of Cooper Mountain, we recently, um, had a great group of, um, uh, a cross-section of, um, elected leaders, um, and/or their staff, um, onsite to take a tour, um, and, um, and learn more about, um, what is currently happening at, at the park. And, um, you know, we had, uh, folks from, uh, you know, state, um, state, regional, county, uh, uh, city of Beaverton, city of Tigard, uh, there. And I think, um, uh, you know, I, I think the common thread for everything is, you know, once you're at the park, once you're in, uh, on the trails, in the trees, uh, you're looking out at the prairie that are, are so unique to that place, um, and you're hearing, um, you know, sometimes the silence, uh, you know, um, and it's, um, it's really spectacular. And I think it moves people to, um, have that alignment of the common value to not only protect what we have, but, um, find ways to, to help it, um, you know, uh, maintain access for wildlife and, um, uh, and for people alike. Um, and so it is something that, uh, you know, resonates with people. Um, if they haven't been in a long time, they really appreciate being back. So that is part of the work that us, uh, uh, Board of Directors, um, are doing. Um, and we will continue to do that to connect, um, our local decision-makers with the physical park and share the opportunities that are there to, um, make it a crown jewel of our area for generations to come. So, uh, really wanted to highlight that. I will pass it over to, uh, somebody else.
Thank you so much, Alfredo. Tia?
Thank you. Um, yeah, so actually I had a meeting with counselor or Beaverton City Councilwoman, um, Tivnan, a few days after you guys did that, and she raved about the tour and all the knowledge that the staff did. And so, um, I want to thank the staff for being able to educate us all always about, you know, why we intentionally do the things that we do and what everything is for and, um, the beauty and the gem that Cooper Mountain is. And she was, um, so floored by it. She actually took her son out the very next day and did the whole tour so she could give her son the tour. So it was very impactful, um, and she saw the beauty and the, um, the beauty of it all. And she has family coming in next week and she's so excited to show it off. So it is really, it's a tourist destination. It's, it's a jewel. It's something that we all need to, um, protect and, uh, hopefully expand. And I know that's the, the priority for all of our, all of our board members here. Um, I also, last month, Nature and Trails met, and so, um, we have a lot of new people on the advisory committee, which is so awesome and, um, everybody's really excited. Uh, we had a review of the Natures and Trail Functional Plan just to kind of educate everybody since we did have such a new group. So they had a lot of interesting questions and, um, they're really into learning all the things that, um, are part of Nature and Trails. And then they kind of brainstormed different ideas of what they wanted to focus on for 2023, including ways to potentially get a grant for their advisory committee for certain projects and thinking about our climate, future of our climate action plan. Um, so they're a really engaged group and, uh, I'm really excited to be sitting there with them and just listening to all of their ideas. And so, um, yeah, it's just wonderful. So thank you to staff for, um, Bruce for being a great liaison leader and always having the right answers or being so willing to educate everybody, whether it's at Cooper Mountain or sitting on Zoom. Um, so thank you so much again for, for everybody's efforts.
Bruce is the MVP.
Um, yeah, go ahead, Heidi.
Thank you. And thank you for all the coordination from staff and you, Felicita, for pulling the ropes to get folks out and up to Cooper Mountain. It's, it is a gem. I'm sorry I wasn't able to join you due to illness, but, um, I will, um, say it's great timing because it is budget season. And so your letters and testimony and interest in Cooper Mountain and the work that we're doing moving forward, looking forward with our budget, um, is, it's very timely. So thank you to those who are, um, have provided testimony and interest in that. And I will just report quickly that our Pension Committee met this past month in February and, um, sort of identifying what our role is, um, going, continuing as a committee. But, um, one of the wonderful things that is coming out of the committee as of late is, um, some FAQs and questions, um, so that Pension Plan participants can better understand how the plan works and understand, you know, sort of its past and moving forward. Um, we know there's been a lot going on with the pension plan and, you know, wonderful things are happening at this point. But I do want to thank the staff, um, who are involved in this, um, for putting together those FAQs and for taking the questions that THPRD staff and pension plan participants have. Um, we want to continue to have, you know, um, communication with pension plan members to make sure that things are clearer as to, you know, where it's at and, um, understand how the plan works. So thanks to the committee for that. And that's it for me.
Thanks, Heidi, and thanks to everyone for all the various ways that you show up and engage and, uh, cheer our, cheer our community on and our staff on. And, um, it's just, things are going well. Happy March. Um, next up, we have Consent Agenda. Do we have a motion to approve? Alfredo? You are muted. So I have a guess what you're saying.
I, I was wondering if I could go back and just say one more thing.
Oh, of course, yeah.
On the board time. Sorry about that. So I, I would be remiss as the, um, as the lone, uh, male board director today on International Women's Day in light of our, our proclamation. Uh, just to, you know, I just want to put in, in context to remind just, um, anyone listening and just, um, that what, uh, uh, a moment, an era that we're in right now in this region in Washington County, um, in particular with, um, you know, um, strong female leadership at, um, at nearly every, um, every area of government, including this board. Um, it, it, it's, it's something we almost get used to now, uh, on a day-to-day basis. But when you zoom out on the historical arc of how things have been, it's, uh, an incredible era that is not lost on people like my eight-and-a-half-year-old daughter, um, and I'm sure plenty more. Um, and I wanted to say, you know, the, the women serving on this board, um, were such, um, uh, helpers and, um, mentors and, um, just empowering, uh, folks like me to, you know, to kind of discover my own leadership, uh, potential. And, um, I really just, uh, want to say how much I appreciate, um, you all and all the other, um, electeds and volunteers and, and staff and people, um, uh, doing this thing. It is a, a special thing. And I hope by the time my daughter is of age to do something similar, uh, it's a little more ordinary that this is, uh, of course, this is how it is. So, um, uh, that's all I wanted to say. So I wanted to make sure I added that in.
Thank you, Alfredo. That was very sweet. And Madeline could probably run in nine and a half years. So now's the time to start planning.
Absolutely. Um, and that being said, uh, on more pragmatic business, um, I'm going to type while everyone listens to me to reopen my computer. Um, here we go. Uh, I would like to move that the board approve the consent agenda as submitted.
This is Tia. I will second.
Jessica, will you please take role?
Heidi Edwards?
Yes. Barbie Minor?
Yes.
Tia Ping?
Yes.
Alfredo Moreno?
Yes.
Felisa Montblanco?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, next up, we have unfinished business. First up, strategic plan development.
Aisha. Yes, hello, board members. Aisha Panis, the Deputy General Manager. And I am excited to introduce this presentation to you today that, uh, Bruce will be running through with you. And, um, we're here today to talk about the next order of business following the adoption of the Comprehensive Plan, which was done just a, a month ago. And it looks like this. We have produced the document. It is full color, beautiful images, maps, ideas, and thoughts. And, um, your copies are, uh, going to be coming your way very soon. But it's a, a beautiful capture of what we want to be in the next 20 years. And so we're really excited to have completed that phase of our process of really critical, long-range planning for this district. And so we're here to talk tonight about what that next phase looks like. And for us, it means taking this document that is that 20-year vision for the future and saying, what are we going to chip away at in the next three to five years? And it's important for us to be able to do that because we've got to take these steps. Um, and these little baby steps are going to help us realize the vision over the longer period of time. So, um, Bruce is going to talk to you about how we intend to largely use the same information that we've got in that comp plan to bring forward those near-term items that we're going to be building our work plans around and then how we want to report that out to you. So I will turn things over to Bruce, who's going to walk you through our plan.
Good evening, Board Members. I appreciate your time. And one of the things I love about my job is I get to be the Nature and Trails Manager, but I also get to coordinate and get involved with staff from other parts of the district. Because I really think like, we need nature, we need recreation, we need sports, we need aquatics. We need all this stuff to make a great community. And the Strategic Plan really helps us put those things together. Next slide, please. So recall, the Comprehensive Plan that was just adopted has seven goal areas. These are these are kind of our our North Stars, if you will. And within those, there are 21 recommendations which unlock some really bigger projects that are important to help each component carry out the kind of more daily or annual work, if you will. Next slide, please. When we dig into each of those seven sections, there's a lot of richness there. In the in the sections that have objectives and principles, there's at least 30 of them in each part. And then we look at some of the ideas that came out of the Vision Action Plan. Each goal area has at least 20 of these things. Next slide, please. And if we start to add and multiply and do things with them, it ends up being a lot of possibility. And and one of the things that's great about the Strategic Plan is we don't have to get scared by that giant number. Next slide, please. But what we can do is we can think about that as a lot of wonderful things that we can do for and with the community by looking at at all the all the possible folks who can get involved. And for for staff, of course, that's going to be team leaders, individual staff. But then we have partners from the community, we have community members, we've got Board of Directors. There's all these different ways for folks to get involved, and that's that's pretty exciting. So so getting a little bit more into detail, next slide, please. What we're going to do is we're going to take some of those recommendations that we talked about at the last meeting, those will go directly into the plan. Those are those are kind of the easy ones in a way, because we know exactly what they are. On the next slide, what we're going to do is those staff teams who are going to lead each component of the of the Strategic Plan will go back in and choose specific items from the Vision Action Plan, from those objectives and 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 kind of hone down. So we really have a package of what exactly are we going to do over the next five years, instead of trying to do everything all at once, which might make us a little bit crazy. Next slide, please. And so this is a sample page of what we envision each of the goal areas getting. On the left side, there'll be those recommendations, and we're just going to outline the major steps that are involved under the Milestones area. We'll have a cost figure there as well, just to get an idea. And it's going to be a ballpark. That's why we have these dollar signs there, just to give a sense of, hey, this is really going to take an investment to do, whereas some of the other things might be done just as part of normal operating procedures. On the other page there, where it says Sample Page Two, that's where we're really going to take a lot of those smaller bits and line them up. And and we've kind of for now categorized them into two areas, core things, things that we do every day, a lot of things in the plan we're already doing, but we want to stay conscious about them. And then we're going to put in some stretch items, things that we're going to aspire, we're going to focus energy on, and maybe do things a little bit differently to accomplish. And again, each of the goal areas will have one of these pages. Next slide, please. And it's great to do all this work. It's even better to be able to report back to our stakeholders and say, hey, you trusted in us, you provided resources, you gave input. This is how we're going to report back to you and tell you what we got done. And so for each of those three areas that I just mentioned, we will report out in slightly different ways. Some of them are pretty easy to measure. For example, the milestones, there's going to be a product, there's going to be major steps we can we can deliver on. Under the goals and objectives and action items, there's going to be a variety of those. Some of them we can put numbers on. Some of them will come back with stories, with pictures, something that demonstrates that staff took to heart what was in the plan and worked with community partners, et cetera, to get them done. Over the next couple of weeks, staff are going to get together, and we're going to pull all those pieces that I just mentioned into a pretty darn good draft, kind of a final draft, and we'll bring that back to you in about a month. Next slide, please. And you can see where we've come from and where we're headed. So we're right at that gold star in the center there. And a lot of good work's been done, a little bit more needs to be done to get us past the finish line. But it's coming right up, which is exciting, because that also overlays with our Capra certification, which we've all been working on in various ways. And with that, if you can go to the last slide, I'm happy to answer questions or take any input that you all have for us.
Thank you, Bruce. Appreciate it. And I I love the idea of some stretch goals, pushing ourselves, but being gentle, maybe if we don't hit those. Any questions or concerns, ideas from colleagues? All right. Thank you, Bruce. You're out of the hot seat.
You're very welcome. See you next month.
Okay, next up, we have Legislative Updates from Kylie and a resolution.
Yes, and so Kylie and I are going to split up some of this presentation tonight. I have the first few slides, and then she is going to get into what I'm sure you're just listening with such anticipation for, which is the the doings in Salem. So if we can start on the next slide, I just want to, you know, frame up that this is an odd or, yeah, an odd year. So we are in the long session year. So you know that on our even years, we are in a short session. This is the one that's the big one, started after right around Martin Luther King Junior Day. And we have a constitutional end date in late June, but I think the target is mid-June to complete all of the work of this legislative session. And the big focus, of course, on this year's session is getting that two year budget adopted to guide how we're going to be seeing the state spend funds over the next couple of years. On the next slide, we wanted to come to you and share with you that we've got some confirmation on the priorities. We've we wanted to bring these forward because we had had input from you previously a few meetings back. And so we did use that information on our statewide legislative platform, and we had some confirming conversations about what's going on in Washington DC to make some conforming sorts of changes to our federal platform as well. So just why this is important to us is because when when you all tell us what is important to you and you have reached consensus on where we should be focusing our energies on tracking on years when there's thousands of bills, that helps Kylie know what to look for. It helps us move quickly when we want to support something, when we want to raise concerns about something. So kind of focusing in on what our key priorities for our district really help us do our best work legislatively. So we have these updated platforms. And in the next slide, we'll talk a little bit about the federal side. And the only real change to this from years past is that we've added the one in the center. So that Climate Adaptation and Community Resiliency item is a new one for us. And all these other ones have been our focus areas for a while, and they're largely based around the three pillars of NRPA. So the social equity, the conservation, the health and wellness. Those are all part of kind of the overarching park and recreation scheme. Active transportation has always been a key priority for THPRD because where we have found success in working at the federal level has been achieving some funding and ease of building trails. And so so that has remained a priority for us. But climate adaptation is something that we've been talking about as a region more and more and more. And you know where you've heard about this. It's about the wildfires. It's about water scarcity. It is about emergency management, the Emerald Dash Borer. It's all these things that really are hitting us right where we are in all of our spaces. And so we want to be watching very carefully for what's happening within that realm. On the next slide, we have the updated state priorities that you confirmed the last time we came to talk with you about that. And so these ones are a little bit different. That climate adaptation one is also key for us at the state level, but we have a little bit different focus inside the state. So local agency control and authority is important to us because it's where we are able to share, like, we're concerned about this issue. This is an unfunded mandate, might be a good idea, might be not so great. It might take away our ability to do the good work that we do. And so we watch things very carefully for that. We also are very keen to see what's going on in the conversation around system development charges, because that is such a critical funding stream for us in serving our growing community. And of course, equitable access to park and recreation has been a very important thing for us because of our overarching Access for All initiative. Finally, the state funding for park, rec and trails. There's been threats from that in the past, and the funding that has traditionally been allocated for park and recreation that comes through in grant programs. We just want to make sure that those funds remain present in the budgets and do provide us with additional funding to do great things within our parks. And we've been recipients of a number of grants, and we just really want to ensure that that program continues. So those are our state priorities. On the next slide, I just wanted to share sort of where we're at on the federal side. We've been working with our consultant in DC, Smith Dawson Andrews, and they have been sharing information as it quickly, quickly rolls out regarding the congressionally directed spending that we've heard about through Senators Wyden and Merkley's offices. And then just, I think, earlier last week, we were given information about the House options for seeking funding. So we did submit with with board support a couple of applications for that congressionally directed spending last week. And so one is related to emergency management and preparedness and sheltering. The other is related to wildfire mitigation. We submitted both of those requests to both of our senators, and our hope was that when the House requests came through, we would be able to submit those same requests to our two congressional representatives. Unfortunately, the House took a different approach with what funding they would allow, and the wildfire mitigation one was not one that was going to be eligible for funding. So that one is a no go on the House side, but we are still pushing forward for consideration to both Congresswoman Salinas and Congresswoman Bonamici, the sheltering and emergency management request. So that is what's going on there. And we also had the opportunity to introduce Smith, Adosson, Andrews folks to our newest member of the Park Services Team, our Grants Administrator, Leilani Garcia. And so they have been having a lot of great conversations and doing a lot of strategizing around benefiting us at the federal level. So next slide, please. All right, so I'm going to turn it over to Kylie now, who is going to tell you all about the activities down in Salem right now.
Yes, hello, everyone. So lots of bills. I love that, Aisha, you did that with an exclamation point, because there are lots of bills happening. Right now, I think we're tracking just over 100 bills that are specific to THPRD and things that we want to track and monitor that align with those priorities that Aisha outlined just a minute ago. We have about 15 to 20 of those bills that are either active or moving or that we're watching more intensely because there's something happening with them right now. So I'm going to highlight a couple of those with Aisha in the next couple of slides and talk through those very quickly. It's getting to kind of be a crunch time at the Capitol because the first real deadline of March 17th is coming up. And that is a deadline for all bills to have been posted for a work session. So if a bill has not had a public hearing and has not had a work session posted on its status, then it is dead, as dead as any bill can be, because there are always kind of ways in which to add them to different bills. But it does allow a bunch of legislation to be cleared from our different various bill trackers and whatnot. So you can really start to understand what the targets or priorities are of different legislators in the committees. And then after that, April 4th is the deadline for all bills to have been moved from their first chamber, whether they started in the House or the Senate, they have to have moved out of that original chamber. And that will be another opportunity for me to kind of help clear out our bill tracker and really see what are the bills we need to be focused on and where are their concerns or opportunities within those bills. Next slide. Okay, so we are going to start with the Local Agency Control and Authority priority. So Senate Bill 858 is back. This is the Children's District Bill that was led by Senator Riley and his wife Kate Riley in the past. It just had a hearing this afternoon. This bill is an exact replica of the bill that was brought forth in 2021. So we did submit a letter on behalf of THPRD to highlight that we had raised concerns previously, and we continue to have those same concerns, especially as they have not been addressed, about the involvement of the BIPOC community in the creation and development of the need for children's districts and also how those would work, how how the competitive grants are figured out, how, you know, the people who serve on that board, all those things that didn't take into account and didn't have folks from across our community at the table when they were developed, and they still have it. So we went ahead and submitted a letter this afternoon. It is unclear right now. A lot of senators are willing to put this forward as a in honor of Senator Riley and also just recognizing that this leaves it up to the people and their words. So we will continue to monitor and be active in the coalition of different people who are raising concerns. And as in the past, it is the same kind of group of different people who are who are expressing the various concerns from compression to the fact that you can do a lot of these things already, and there's these different funding avenues that are already existing to support these kinds of programs for kids outside of school. So we'll keep a close eye on that one, but it is back. And then on the next one, House Bill 3515. This is actually a bill that has been put forward by Portland Parks. And I'm going to kick this over to both Doug and Aisha to talk a little bit more about what this bill does and get some feedback from this group to see how you'd like us to move forward.
Go ahead, Aisha. Yes, so so this is a bill that the Portland has a representative on the ORPA Legislative Committee, on which I sit as well. And that representative had brought this forward to us for a conversation. The intent is really to preserve and protect funding for Portland Parks. And so the idea is that the special districts statute would be amended to allow a city that has a higher population, and right now, this is the only one, Portland would be the only one that would qualify, that would allow a park district to be formed and still governed by the city council. And so the the conversation at ORPA's Legislative Committee, it's really been, we love funding for parks and rec. But that's that's where it kind of then divides between folks that work for cities and folks that work for special districts. Because the concern for folks that work with special districts is that we like the fact that we are governed by our own board, and and we're concerned that changing up how you can govern a special district that provides these type of park services could erode that that relationship and that power and that that benefit of a special district. So so there's just been a lot of concern and question about that. The Special Districts Association of Oregon is leaning towards opposing this. That's the that's the direction we're sort of headed. So I don't think anyone wants to be opposed to funding stream that could be generated from this. But there is a concern about places that are near or in cities that could take this. If there's currently a restriction on a population of 600,000, what happens if the next amendment is for cities of 50,000 that you could do this as well? So so it's it's generating a lot of conversation. And I know that Doug and I have talked about it, and we've talked with folks from around the state about it. And we wanted to just bring this forward and get some get some input and answer any questions that we can. So I don't know if, Doug, you have anything more you'd like to add?
Other than we need to watch it closely.
Would you like input now or after the full presentation?
I think this is the primary one that we we would like your input on. So if you'd like to offer it now, we'd be happy to take it.
Yeah, I'm you you bring up all the, Aisha, you have the expertise, and I totally agree with everything you're saying. It's concerning. This is, to me, this bill is like perfect example of intent versus impact. They want to do awesome work, and of course, our, we want our friends at Portland to be able to have the resources they need to do wonderful parks work. I wish they had maybe reached out to us and could have learned our perspective on this and the one the wonderfulness of having a our own set of Board of Directors. I I support if if we, I mean, it sounds like we're leaning towards opposing. To me, there's some serious education opportunities here, because I I feel like maybe some of our peers don't understand the potential impact of this. But I I'm not opposed to opposing, I guess.
Thank you.
Any thoughts from other folk? Any thoughts from other folks?
I just more had a clarification question. So, I mean, they do need a funding. Are we saying that if this pass, this could potentially alter the way THPRD does work? Or since we're already established that, that it wouldn't really relate to us, but it's more for the future of other special districts to form?
So that, that came up. And so just to clarify, this would be a statutory amendment to allow a city to govern a special district that's created. The bill would not create the special district. That would still have to be a will of the voter's decision. But that, the, the reason why this is a concern and a suggested amendment that came up in the conversation at ORPA was, you know, if there is already a special district present, could you say in the bill that the city couldn't do this if there's already a special district serving that area? If, if it's an area without any sort of district representation, like maybe that's okay. But the potential to take over a district or encroach into a district could have major implications for an existing district like us. And so if this was something that Portland did, but then somehow things changed down the road than any city could do, that would certainly have implications for us as a park provider. So I'm sorry, I don't know if I exactly answered your question.
No, you did. I mean, and is there not a way that we can say like we would support it if they put in the amendment that already established special districts? Wouldn't be affected by this or couldn't be taken over by like a city council and would just remain? Because I feel like it just depends on what kind of resources each city has and where they want to go or what's already set up, right?
Yeah, and it was suggested at the, the last legislative meeting. And I haven't heard that that suggestion was taken in. I think even with that amendment, at least Special District Association of Oregon would still oppose the bill.
Okay. I think that it's important that we think about like not today, but 20 years from now, right? Of what this could be. I mean, it's hard to envision right now that the city of Beaverton will start their own parks district, right? I don't think they would do that. But 20 years from now, I don't know who's in charge. I don't know the, the state of the, the community, right? So I think, yeah, I, I don't love this bill. I love the intention. I love the intention.
Well, and I think part of what you brought up is, is happening, the education piece. I think there is, they did, you know, melody with the parks on the ORPA call. And others have been receiving feedback and having some of those conversations about where exactly some of those concerns are. So I think they are starting to understand what those various impacts could be for existing special districts, which is I think helpful to the conversation.
And I, I think that education piece is critical because, I mean, we know how many times we've had to explain to our, our own patrons, right? That this is not, we're not a part of the city, we're not a part of the county, right? We're, we're on our own jurisdictions and we can't, we can't expect legislators to know everything. That's not fair. And so maybe this is an opportunity, an opportunity to educate what special districts do and how parks, special districts are the best. So I'm gonna, I gotta reframe this as an opportunity.
I would agree, and I think coming out of, I mean, I don't know if this was, this is just off the top of my head, but coming out of pose is a much stronger language where it, it creates a need for conversation versus kind of being wishy washy about it and saying like, if you put this, not, I mean, we saw with SB 858, they can bring it back again once they like edit it, you know? But being able to say that we're opposed and for this specific reason and we would need something changed to protect us or protect existing special districts, then that's like a completely different conversation. But I would support being opposed to it for as it states right now, so.
I'd agree with that as well, Tia. That's well said.
Barbie jumping in here, I agree with my, my fellow directors as well. Slippery slope.
Exactly, that's what we've heard, yes.
Yeah, no further comments from me at this point either, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much for that. We don't anticipate digging into each one of these bills the way we just have. So we appreciate your time on this one. And Kylie, go ahead and take it away with the rest.
Great, so I did put just a couple of others that are in this bucket because this bucket is actually very active and there's lots of bills here. So just some of the other ones that are bubbling. House Bill 2011 is actually an ORPA bill. It's about increasing penalties for assaults committed against parks and recreation employees. That one is likely not moving this session due to a couple of different, so the politics around it, but also there's a number of bills that do this for different workers and trying to figure out what that would cost and what that looks like. So not dead yet, but concerned about that one. But it is one that we're, we're monitoring and working with ORPA on. The next bill, 3205, has to do with the exemption for hiring and hiring bonuses and some different things as an exemption to pay equity, as a way to entice and increase ability for different agencies and actually businesses and different folks to hire people, especially around the COVID pandemic. It became a real problem. And so there's a large group of folks who are seeking to extend that exemption to help with hiring of, of people across the state. So we're watching that one. And then Senate Bill 754 is an interesting one, and I'm not sure if it's going to move or not, but it has to do with recreational liability and it's really at the behest of the ski industry. The difference kind of between recreational immunity, which is what happens when you don't pay a fee versus the liability issues when you do. There's some interesting things that the bill has presented. There was like a retroactive piece where they could look backward and that, we had some questions around that. And then there was a very interesting point made in the public hearing that was held a few weeks ago that had to do with a situation that happened at a exercise facility in the childcare there. And an assault happened there and had the opponents or people who are concerned with this bill think that, that individual might not have been held, been able to be held liable for his actions were this bill in place because of the wording. So I don't think that was the intent of the drafters at all. So we're continuing to monitor and see where this one ends up. But as of right now, there's too many questions for us about what, what this would actually do. So those are just a couple, a handful of the ones in this bucket that we are tracking and have some conversations on. We can go to the next slide. So system development charges, this one's really amped up in the last few weeks. So House Bill 2984 allows for the conversion of commercial buildings to workforce housing. And in part of that, it prohibits local governments from collecting SDCs on those conversions. THPRD submitted a letter specifically about the parts of the bill that, that referenced SDCs and really noted the importance, what they, for the district around collecting SDCs and some of the nuances around commercial development as well. We were not the only ones that had a lot of local government entities also concerned and expressing that that's just, if we're doing a commercial conversion, that's a lot of people, right? That's probably a more, a denser area. And those are some of the folks that need parks and rec the most. Those outdoor spaces, those natural spaces and whatnot, and also just the impact of the system represented by taking, you know, a big store with maybe two toilets and all of a sudden putting in 20 toilets. That's going to have an impact to the system and somebody that needs to be paid for to make sure people have the infrastructure they need. So that's that bill. House Bill 2260, so this was a placeholder bill from Representative Lively, who had led the conversation in previous sessions around system development charges that ultimately led to the big study that came out with the final draft in December. He wanted to do something to address SDCs and look at this. And I can tell you that it was supposed to have a hearing tomorrow and it's already been pulled. And he does not see this bill moving forward. The intent behind this bill again was a good one. He wanted to figure out a way to have the state reimburse local government entities that provided discounts for affordable housing. A couple of things, he didn't include special districts as an entity that could seek that reimbursement. He also, the bill made it, I shouldn't say he, the bill that was drafted also made it so that if you already had this sort of policy on the book where you provided discounts, you, that you weren't eligible. This is only for people who are for these cities that were putting in a new policy that they had not done before. And then the formula also got a little bit weird and nobody could quite figure out some of those things. And so he didn't feel like it was written exactly the way that he wanted. And it had caused a lot of like, this sounds good, but wait a minute, there are a couple of details that we need to discuss. So he's looking to probably do a work group after that first chamber deadline to discuss system development charges because he really does feel like there's something to be done here in support of affordable housing, though he does not look to do a bill this session. So we will, I told him we wanted to be monitoring that and have, we have some expertise in this as far as parks, SDCs and special districts. And so he has us on our list to, to contact once he decides to go down that road. SB 998 has another piece related to SBCs that's part of a big housing package. Some of the things that are happening with House Bill 2001, which if you're following the housing conversation, is one of those big omnibus bills that includes Oregon Housing Needs Analysis that is causing, that's a lot of work and complexities. It also relates to the governor's 60 day package around homelessness and housing that's coming out. So that bill is one that we, we're not sure if that bill on its own is going to move or whether it's going to be part of a package and to what extent SDCs will be part of it. So that's kind of a big conversation where we're watching that one piece to figure out where and when we might want to, if we need to become involved, knowing that all the big kind of associations are also really involved in some of those conversations and the negotiations on those packages. So next slide. And please do pause, like ask questions as I go. I know I'm just talking because I realize you've got a lot of things on your agenda to get to. So equitable access to parks and recreation. House Bill 2717 caused us a little bit of a pause because it looked like it, it's creating a new licensure for outdoor preschool programs. And the base bill, the way it was written, might have required THPRD to have to go through a new licensure process and fees. But then they rewrote it because they realized there was some confusion in, in the bill. And it clarified that as a special district, as a unit of local government and as reported programs, we are not required to go through that new kind of licensure pathway that they are creating for those outdoor preschool programs, which are wonderful. And it's lovely that they're able to create that. It allows more access, it allows them to have some more dollars to be a part of preschool promise, to get more kiddos able to fill some of those slots. So good bill, we just weren't sure what it would mean for us had we been involved. The next one is House Bill 3212. And a lot of times you'll hear me talk about a study bill that's just a placeholder. It's going to get adopted or amended later in this, in the, in the session. This one actually is a real study bill that he really did. The advocate, Representative Reski, really did want to kind of look at the use of e-bikes on public trails. ORPA is, the legislative committee is figuring out whether or not we would like to work with him on some amendments to clarify what that study could really be, that could be helpful to ORPA members around getting some consistency around the laws and rules around e-bikes on trails. Also, one of the members on the ORPA Legislative Committee brought up the issue of equity that for a lot of people, e-bikes are a mode of transport and a way to get outside that others don't have. And so it would be helpful to also think about that in any sort of study to, to look at the equity issues that are involved as well. So we are trying to figure out whether or not, if we make those amendments, if this bill has any legs or how dedicated kind of Representative Reski would be or whatnot. So that is a continuing conversation. And at the bottom, I restate what I said earlier, but there are a lot of moving parts around housing and homelessness supports and services. And we are monitoring those both through ORPA and just on our own. So there's lots of big negotiations going on and we, I want to be mindful of where and when THPRD's, THPRD's voice is most helpful. And also recognizing that in the middle of a negotiation, what we think might be an issue is still being worked on. And it's, it's not really helpful to, to just say, oh, we don't like this one part when we're not quite sure what that end result is going to be. So we are going to continue to monitor all of those and see how those look. So next slide.
Kylie, just a quick question. She sponsor for the e-bike?
Representative Reski, he's a Republican, I'm forgetting where from.
I was just curious if it was Graber because I know she loves her e-bike, so I was curious.
Well, that is helpful information because if we do move forward, we'd have her be, you know, see if she might be willing to jump onto that bill to support e-bikes and their use.
She loves her e-bike, she's posted about it on social media.
Very helpful, any little tidbits like that are always welcome, everyone. I love it. Okay, so state funding for trails, parks and recreation. This bucket has not been as active because really we haven't moved into the kind of the deep budget part of session yet. They did, the department did have their informational hearings in early February. But as Aisha talked about, we had the revenue forecast, I think on February 22nd. The legislature and Ways and Means are moving into some of their reconciliation of this biennium's costs and funding. And then we'll move to the legislative recommended budget. We're a little bit behind because we had a new governor, you know, new new, not just a new term for them. And so we got that budget in late January, whereas usually they unveil the government, governors recommend a budget in early December. So we're expecting those conversations to really ramp up. And we'll probably have more to say about this as we learn more about what that looks like. We did submit a letter on one bill that had to do with the, after, the summer and after school learning and enrichment grant program that came out during COVID. And they're trying to figure out instead of having one-time funds, how that be a funded grant opportunity moving forward. So we were able to submit a letter about supporting that, seeking it to go further and then being able to talk about some of the really great things that THPRD did with the funds that they were awarded. So next slide. Climate adaptation and community resiliency. Another place that we offered testimony again is on House Bill 3016, which establishes Community Green Infrastructure Grant Program, a fund and a task force around advising ODF around urban tree canopies, it was called the Tree Bill. Lots of support for it, lots of people who testified about the, the different ways in which urban canopies impact cities and the climate and whatnot. And we were able to be part of that. And I think you mentioned earlier, Aisha, the Ashbore piece of this on, there's some assistance that could be brought forth in this. So we submitted testimony in support of that bill. House Bill 2835, this is a smaller bill, but it is an opportunity for the district. Representative Evans has a bill where he would like to establish a pilot program to award grants for recreation fishing facilities within the UGB. Right now, however, the bill only says that cities, counties and nonprofits would be eligible. So we are working with him on possibly adding special districts just to have that opportunity and work with him to get a few more sponsors on the bill for it to move forward. So those are some of the pieces. There are lots of other big packages as well about the Global Warming Commission and different things that are moving forward. So we are watching all of those around emission changes, community resiliency hubs, trying to see which ones really are gaining traction to be able to participate in. So that is community resilience and climate adaptation. Next slide. Anyway, I think this is, Aisha and I also just mentioned really quick, we are April 4th doing legislative visits down in Salem. So I think we've got a good amount of those meetings already squared away with the legislators. I was really just disappointed, I heard from Senator Steiner that she is not available when she thought she was going to be available in observance of a religious holiday. So she won't be on our list, but I think we've got almost everyone else. So that should be a good day of meetings for us.
All right.
Can I just, Kylie, is it April 4th or April 5th?
Oh, did I say the wrong date?
I think our hold is on the 5th.
On the 5th, okay. That's what I have on my calendar.
Want anyone to have a panic attack, but yeah.
I have a family birthday on the April 4th date. So that's why I just, when I say that, like it just comes out, my apologies. I didn't mean to give anyone a heart attack. I take that back.
No worries, I just, I have it on my calendar to participate, so I wanted just to confirm.
And I'm so happy you do. So April 5th, we've got a good lineup so far.
Great, thank you very much, Kylie. And, you know, thank you for your patience as we worked through some of those. We wanted to give you a representative sample of what we're seeing in those different priority areas. If you are interested in reading all the bills that we are tracking, we did send out the bill tracker to you this afternoon. And so all of these bills are listed on there as well as other ones that we've been keeping an eye on. So if there's anything on there, we certainly didn't expect you to read that tonight in advance of this meeting. But if there is anything on there that you want us to dig in further on or have questions about, we're always willing to have a conversation. So just let us know if that's the case. We're moving into the next and final part of this presentation and it's about the ask that we have for you tonight, which is the consideration of a resolution that would maybe streamline our process a little bit. And so the resolution that we've shared with you is, is one that really defines more straightforwardly and formally the process that we go through when we're talking about legislative advocacy. So what it does is really describes those legislative priorities, both at the federal and state level, that are those approved by the board, key interest areas for you. It talks about what the process would be for going through our review of these bills and then determining sort of what direction we should take, whether we oppose, support, et cetera. And then defines a reporting process as well, so that we can continue to keep you updated as things evolve. And then one thing that we think could be very helpful is that it identifies what district officials that are eligible to speak on behalf of us, who those folks would be. And so if you go to the next slide, I just want to go through a couple of bullets here for you all. So what this process would look like is that as we do now, we would be reviewing these pending bills. We would continue the conversations we're having between our agencies, other agencies, ORPA and SDAO. We would make a recommendation. Um, we would make a recommendation on a position, and that's what we're doing now by, you know, bringing forward these items to you to say, do you want to sign off on this letter or not? So we will indicate whether it's something we want to support, support if amended, oppose, um oppose unless amended, or if um if it's not clear, what we would do is bring that forward to the board. But if if we have bills that are coming forward that are very clear what our district position would be based on those legislative priorities, this would allow Doug to work with the president of the board, who's the legislative liaison, to make make those calls, and we can streamline our process and speed up our process of being able to provide this input. Um, and and it would just take a little bit of the processing step out of it. So again, if there were any question about whether it fit with our priorities or there were some concerns, we would always elevate those items to the board. But we're um asking for you to consider this resolution uh to allow us to move quickly on these uh changes as they're happening down in Salem. So I'll pause and see if there are any questions.
I appreciate um all the the efficiency this spring. So thank you. And I know there's, things just happen so fast and Kylie can't call each one of us as she tries to to navigate all this in Salem. Um, so I I have no concerns about the resolution. Um, and this maybe needs to be a conversation offline. I'm just wondering about SDCs and, you know, at least how I'm viewing it is that legislators want to, you know, cut most of them because they are, they are one barrier to affordable housing, and I I fully understand that. And I feel like we're over here doing really thoughtful work, the hard work of like having tough conversations of what does it mean to reduce SDCs. I just, I just feel like we need to do a road show. This, this is pretending money and time is no issue. I just, I feel like we've set such a good example. And like, it took a long time. Um, it wasn't quick and it, I don't know, I'm just processing because I ju- I just feel like the conversations are, well, we have to cut SDCs. And I I get where that comes from and like, I'm much more interested in holding electeds accountable to at least having conversations about what it would mean to cut SDCs. So I, but I don't, I don't know that you could put that in a bill. Um, so thank you for letting me process.
No, that's very fair. And I think that if there is a work group or some opportunity along those lines, um, that would be a place where we could plug in and have do some of that education and share some of the good work and and the challenges that we've already gone through and what it means. Um, and I will say that the SDC study that came out in December, we had some concerns with the draft that was released in October and shared um back based on THPRD's um your experience and and the work that you've done. And there were some changes based on all the feedback, recognizing the critical role that SDCs play, particularly for parks and rec and the costs that um are associated with that. So we've been able to influence some of the things that have already come out and we're um set up, we're 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 poised to be part of the conversations going forward. And it is just a struggle because um, SDCs, it's it's an easy thing to point to, but then when we think about um the available revenue streams to be able to do that critical infrastructure, there's just not a lot. And until you sit down and really think about some of those, what the the financing and the funding is, um, you don't see how clearly what we're talking about. And it gets to be the big, huge, the big, huge issues of how all of our kind of property taxes and all of that stuff are intertwined and what's available and not available to local government. So it gets to be a big conversation really easily, but I can completely appreciate that sentiment and wanting to be part of whatever solution there could possibly be.
Well, thank you Kylie and Aisha for all your hard work on this. If there's no other questions, then we can entertain a motion.
This is Barbie. I'm happy to jump in and make a motion. I move that the board of all right. I move that the Board of Directors approve Resolution number twenty twenty three oh three to establish legislative advocacy procedures and advocacy priorities.
This is Heidi. I second.
Esca, will you please take a roll?
Tia Ping?
Yes.
Alfredo Moreno?
Yes.
Heidi Edwards?
Yes.
RB Minor?
Yes.
Please, Amanda Blanco?
Yes.
Uh, next up. Sorry. Uh, thank you, Aisha and Kylie. Uh, next up, we have a new business district budget priority uh around sustainable operating and financial models.
Yes, we've got Aisha and Holly are going to present this. This will be the start of several different conversations we'll have uh proposing to have over the next two to three months.
Thank you, Doug. Uh, so we're here to talk to you uh and do our first report out on a budget priority you identified this last fall as we moved into uh this this coming budget year. And one of the key things and something that came out of our comprehensive plan as well was the development of sustainable operating and financial models. Um, something that we have been noticing is all around us, and you'll hear more about this during the presentation, that um agencies all around us are finding out that um things are changing for them, and COVID changed things. And so we knew that this was a a topic that was going to be something we needed to focus in on, and that's why it became a priority and a recommendation. And so we wanted to talk through um sort of what our thinking is around this topic. Uh, on the next slide, we wanted to talk about why, why are we prioritizing this future budget? And and the fact of the matter is that over time, our expenses will be overshadowing our revenues. Um, we have a set number of dollars that come to us through our tax base, and we have revenue that comes from user fees, and that that particular bucket took a major hit in the pandemic, and we've been slowly building back. But as we do that and as we have some pressures um on these these revenues that are coming in, it really put a point on the fact that we need to think about how we allocate our funds now, how we're going to realize this vision that our community has for us for the future, and how we stay within the constraints of our budget at the same time. So on the next slide, we wanted to point out a few of those uh factors that are really affecting the budget pressure. And the pandemic was the huge one. This is sort of an order of magnitude description that we're trying to share with you. And and what we know is that closing down numerous facilities for quite some time um had an impact. We also know that things have changed and desires have changed from our community. And so people are participating with us in slightly different ways or haven't yet felt comfortable returning. And so that has an effect on those user fee collected, user fees collected, that um power part of our budget. We have talked with you as every part of our revised spending plan presentations, every couple of months, we come back to you and talk to you about our challenges and hiring. The labor market retain- remains very difficult for us, and the ability to bring in staff is really what allows us to offer the sorts of programming that we have offered in the past. We've talked about, you know, the the pressure from pension funding. We've talked about having to raise our part-time pay scales twice in one year. We, in twenty twenty-two, we did raise our um our part-time wages in January and also again in May, and those were three percent increase in January and a five percent increase in May. And that was intended to try and capture the folks that we needed to help us pull off our summer program with that higher bump mid-year. Um, and and it worked to some degree. We were able to offer more programming over the summer, but it remains um a pressure. And we see that we have neighbors to the west and to the east that are paying lifeguards, for example, substantially more than we are than we can afford to pay. And those, those are, you know, dollars, four dollars and fifty cents more an hour in some cases. And that is just uh an extremely challenging thing to compete with. Um, we know inflation has had a major issue. We put new parks and trails on there because while we have SDC funds to build these new parks and trails, our operational dollars don't increase because those are now there. Um, we get modest increases from homes that are built in our newly developing areas, but but largely the cost to then care for these spaces is a a further um hit to our budget. And then, of course, class comp and pay equity, being able to recruit and retain our employees, the quality folks that run all these programs that try to bring people in through the door, that has a cost and is a is an impact to our budget as well. So combined altogether, those things are really proving that we're, we're not quite going to meet all the need um for the dollars that we need, and and that's over the longer term. So on the next slide, I want to turn things over to Holly, who's going to talk a little bit about what we're seeing around us.
Okay, so the good news is we're not alone. And I don't know why, but that always feels good when you know you're, you're struggling with a problem, that you're not alone with that problem. So we know that local governments across the country are dealing with the same problem. And to some extent, we've got a little bit of a good news situation in that we know our problem is coming down the line. While we're having some challenges today, we've got some forecasting information for you that we'll share this evening that talks about, we're managing okay today, but looking ahead, we see some some bigger challenges coming. Today, though, our partners in Washington County, they're having to cut their budgets pretty significantly the right now for the next fiscal year. So Washington County is looking at a twenty-five million dollar shortfall, and the city of Beaverton is looking at a ten million dollar shortfall. This, so the exercise we're talking about and what we're talking about is not unique and a common challenge that we're all facing at the local government. It's a budget squeeze. On the next slide, we can see some of the information that we shared with y'all at the mid-year budget meeting. Because we adopted three years ago a revised operating plan, it allowed us to be flexible, adaptable and nimble as we've moved through the year. So every quarter, our managers within this district are looking at their actual expenses compared to the revenues coming in, and we're rebalancing as we go. You can see for this uh fiscal year that while we have an eight point four million dollar shortfall from what we projected in our general fund, we've still been able to get through the fiscal year by managing with our revised operating plan. Um, so the process has been working for us. On the next slide, please. But we don't look the same as we did. And you know, one of the things in preparing for this presentation that we talked about was your discussion at the board meeting when you talked about our values and priorities. And one of the things that you talked about when we got to the priority on focusing on rebuilding programming, it was the Board of Directors that said to us, you know, we're, we're in a different place than we were at the beginning of the pandemic. We've evolved. We've got to think about things differently. And it's really interesting how at the early stages of the pandemic, we were thinking about returning to normal, building back. We would talk about these phrases. Those phrases aren't working for us today. And as we've reopened, we're not the same THPRD that we were before the pandemic. And in some ways, those differences might not be so obvious across the district. For example, at your mid-year budget meeting, you had a lot of um of uh outreach from Stur Center patrons talking about the impact of the reduced hours and the closed days at the Stur Center. And what that really shines a light on is patrons at one particular center and what their experience is like. But the reality of it is, those cuts in operations are happening throughout the district. So as you can see, Sunset Swim Center, it's been closed for three years. It is going to open at the end of this month for the first time in three years. And when it opens, it's going to be open four hours a day, five days a week, right? So it's open, but it's not operational to where it was before the pandemic. We have four centers that are closed weekends. We have three centers that are closed on Sundays. And all of our centers have experienced significant changes to their programming, to their operational hours. There's a reason why the sign there with the business hours are blank, because it's changing, right? Our center supervisors have been empowered to try to adjust their schedules the best they can to meet the demand at their facilities. But the point is, we are not able to operate THPRD today within the resources that we have with the challenges we're facing at the operational level that we did before. And that's part of the story that we need to tell the public, right? We need to be able to to share that information that we're not where we were before. And that's a question for us. What do we want to look like in the future? And what level of operations do we want to have? And what resources will it take to get there? On the next slide, please. Aisha is going to start off talking about um uh where we're at with programming, and I'll pick it up. So Aisha, please take it away.
Right. And 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 Holly's talked about the evolution of our operation through the pandemic. And so where we are right now with our programming is that we're, we're still doing a lot of the things that we were doing in the early days of the pandemic when our doors were closed. We could not welcome people in. And we were going out to where they were. We were doing uh events. We were doing mobile recreation. We would um go out to parks and we'd do fitness in the parks. And so we were doing at that time and have continued to do these sort of no-cost activities out around the district. And we've seen great dividends from this. We've gotten great support from the community for that. And it's something that we haven't walked away from in um and and gone to do different activities. We have focused on still serving people in this way and trying to balance that with our limited budget dollars to also do things like reopen facilities. So wh- what we do know is that our our staffing numbers just overall mean there's going to be less programming options. We've had to put up a message at every registration day that our ability to provide swim classes is very challenged by the lack of swim instructors that we have, the lack of lifeguards that we have. There are certain areas in our organization that have been hit a little bit harder than that. And those, those mean less programming options. And so Holly's going to talk about a few of the other things that have developed during the pandemic that are things that we truly believe are leaning into our values, that are still providing value to the community, but these things take resources from our organization. So Holly, go ahead.
Well, one of the things that we want to talk, because you know, talking about budget shortfalls, you know, it's, it's hard. It's depressing, right? It's heavy. But one of the things that resource scarcity does is it forces us to be creative and adaptive and nimble and think differently. So we also want you to to celebrate and feel good about the good news stories and and recognize that we're trying to think differently and do our work differently to respond. So for example, I think one of the great stories coming through the pandemic is how we were able to expand, expand access to the folks in greatest need in our community. We have seen triple-digit, triple-digit increases in participation, and some thought they'd be in the need that because of our adaptive changes to the program. Allowing a pre-registration, moving it to a full week instead of at eight AM on registration day, working with community partners. We were able to expand our financial aid program by not only increasing the dollars that can go to each individual family and participant, but reducing some of the systemic barriers that allowed them the choice of how to utilize those dollars and what services to go. So we're expanding our financial aid access. We're increasing utilization of programming for those in most need in our community. While we weren't able during the pandemic to put on um a large-scale events that the community has loved in the past, what we were able to do with a smaller events team and less resources was put on more culturally specific events co-produced with partners that really got at the heart of what people were asking for in the community vision. So the point being that even in times of resource scarcity, we are looking to our values and figuring out how to expand access to those in the greatest need, how to follow through on the direction from the board and the community, and doing those things, seeing really meaningful results and changes in people's lives even in times of scarcity. So we want you to hold on to that positive notion as we talk about the future because we've got lots of ideas on how to continue to do that. Next slide, please.
So with this slide, we just want to bring this forward again. You've seen this exact graphic a number of times, and this is continuing to be a a big uh impact on our operation. Um, something that Holly's talked a lot about with us is that, you know, it's a real catch twenty-two. It's that um there's these low staffing levels, which is great because we save money, but we need the people to run the programs to then generate the revenue. And so that has been our big challenge. We've been able, like, like Holly showed you with our revised operating plans, we've been able to manage this, this uh shortfall i- in our programs and try to slowly rebuild over time. But we've done that. But we've done that because, you know, if we're not running the programs, we don't have the cost of the employee. And so this is a way to have managed that funding stream. It's not the way we want to do it. It is not the preferred way and it doesn't allow us to serve our community in the way that we really want to. So this has been the ongoing challenge on that part-time basis to to bring the right people in to run those programs so that we can rebuild to the programming levels we saw earlier 2019. So on the next slide, Holly's going to give you a little bit more on the financial picture and the forecast.
So while we're hitting you with good news and bad news, you know, the good news is we have some time. We're not in the position position of our peers of having to look at next year's budget and cut millions of dollars. We are able to deliver a balanced budget for next fiscal year and we're able to live within our revised operating plan in our balanced budget this year. But looking at the arc and the trajectory, we know that staffing levels will increase. And when those staffing levels increase, that cushion will be gone. And we're going to see those expenses outpacing revenues at a much faster clip than we'll be able to sustain. And looking at your priorities for us, you were very clear. Your priority was build sustainable financial and operational models that will keep us enduring and able to have a strong foundation in the future. Uh, we have a blank screen.
If it's just me, then no biggie. But if it's everyone else.
I still see it.
Oh, okay.
I apologize, Felice. I will do my best to.
Well, you're an excellent narrator, so no worries.
Okay, well, the point of this chart is showing where we're at in the next fiscal year in term. Oh, there it went bye-bye. Now I don't.
She's going to relaunch it.
Yeah, okay. Well, off the top of my head, looking at the slide when it comes back up. Uh, thank you, Jessica. What it shows us is that on the curve that we're moving within five years, we would need to reduce $16 million from our budget to or about 21% of our annual budget to be able to live within our balanced budget. So to ensure that our expenditures were within our revenues, we need to cut 21% in five years. That's not where we want to be. So what we want to do now is start thinking about what can we do to make course corrections to make sure that we're not in that position in five years. And as you can see, we've looked at the different parts of the budget that are most impacted. You know, next fiscal year, our employees, which are our greatest asset, but also the district's greatest expense would represent 59% of our operating budget. If we stay on the course that we've set, they would represent 86% in five years, not sustainable. Materials and services would be reduced by half, not sustainable. So materials and services are the goods that we buy, the things that we need to purchase to operate the district. We would not have a sufficient contingency and we would not have sufficient funds and capital. We'd have none. So not sustainable. We need to avoid that picture. We need to make some course corrections. Next slide, please. The good news is we've got time. We've got time to build a plan of action. We've got our values and our priorities to guide us. We know what our community vision is. We know we're committed to that community vision. And we know that we've got our values in place to guide our decisions. And remember what I asked you to hold. We can still make great things happen in times of scarcity when we lead with our values and make investment choices with them guiding us. And we have opportunities to look at ways that we can increase revenues. Next slide, please.
So as Holly said, we are going to lead with our values and that's our commitment as your staff to you is that we're going to be looking at those small course corrections that we can make now and over the course of the next few years. And we're going to be making those choices, leading with these values. So leading with equity with a special attention on racial equity, environmental stewardship and that commitment to community vision. Those will be the filters we run through in order to come to you with any suggestions, recommendations or ideas about how we move forward. The next slide has our budget priorities and just as a reminder with all of those, we will be also considering these things as we talk about the future. We still want to make those investments in our employees and technology. We want to focus on strengthening the programming we are able to offer. And what this whole presentation has been about tonight is developing that sustainable funding and operating models that can serve us into the future, that ensures that we live within the funding that we have available to us and we're constantly looking to enhance the funding we have. Regarding that, on the next slide, we wanted to talk a little bit about the work that we're doing now on revenue enhancement. So we are pulling together a team in-house to talk about our financial future. And so this work group is going to be looking at different ways that we can enhance revenue streams that we have now, also looking at things we haven't yet considered. An example of one thing that we're looking to do differently with a program we're running now is we're looking at our park shelters. And so we're looking at ways that we can return to the pre-pandemic model of offering up two different rental periods a day. And we're also looking at expanding the number of places where we can make those shelter reservations available. Not not a huge thing, not going to solve an eight point whatever percent gap, but it is one step towards thinking about how we can use our spaces differently, open up more opportunities to the community to participate. So we're looking at those expanded revenues. We're thinking about the revenue approach that we have taken for many years. And when I first came to the district nearly 10 years ago, we had just developed a cost recovery model that really helped us identify where we were going to allocate our resources. And what's important about that is that we know we have a set number of dollars coming in from our tax base, for example. And a resource allocation model tells us what we need to protect by spending and using those dollars. We can try and find ways to make up the difference elsewhere, but what are our key things we want to support? And what are the services we want to protect? Knowing your values, knowing your priorities, we can better come up with a project, a schedule, a a plan for how we can meet those needs. And building into that plan, our resource allocation model, a new look at what is important to us as a district is going to be a critical component for us and is part of this budget priority work that we are undertaking now. And then the bottom one, balancing our equity values within resource constraints. We don't want to leave people behind. We understand that if we raise class fees, if we were to go out and seek additional funding from our tax base, those all have impacts on folks that are not as resourced as others within our community. So that is always going to be a key concern for us. But ultimately, what we're looking at are things that can sustain us into the future that are not one-time fixes, but are things that will continue to ensure that we can meet the needs and we can do that within our means. Next slide.
Aisha, before we move on, I want to add an example because again, I think it's hard to contextualize what we're saying, like you can have both, right? You can think about how you mitigate the risks of some choices and still make some difficult choices. But I want to give an example of how we can live the our talk and live our equity values during a time of resource constraints in terms of scarcity. So in 2019, we did an assessment of the scholarship program that we, because of that assessment, relabeled the financial aid program. And we have enacted many of the ideas in there. One of the ideas in there that was on the table that we've always considered and and discussed, but never have implemented is looking at financial aid, not based on dollars, but based on spots, right? And so if you think in terms of allocating and protecting spots in programming for folks in financial aid versus a direct allocation resource, there's creativity there in how we can pencil out and increase access. So these are the things that we're going to be holding ourselves accountable to as we move through this process of having to identify ways to increase revenue. We're going to constantly be putting up bumpers on ourselves to be talking about. But as we do that, how do we ensure we're not pricing out? And how do we expand access to the most cost sensitive members of our community to ensure their access to THPRD? Okay, next slide, please. So many of our partners rely on operating levies. That is something that THPRD in our history relied on a lot in the past, not in the recent past, but but in the past. So we're still working on putting together some specifics and we'll have information for you at your April meeting on our own agency history with operating levies. But we wanted to share with you that many of our partners in Washington County rely on operating levies. In fact, in November of 2022, the Beaverton School District successfully passed a renewal of their five-year levy. And as you can see, it passed with over 72% of voters supporting that. Metro was able to pass a five-year levy renewal for the natural, for the Parks and Nature area. And Tuilaton Valley Fire and Rescue has relied on operating levies every five years since 2000. And their last levy was passed in 2019 and passed at 82%. So again, not necessarily what we wanted to do was put this out there for context and for information that we have a community that has very much supported local governments, that we have models to follow of partners who have been incredibly successful on telling their story. And you know, in this case, it's really interesting that there were three levies from agencies and at the same time. And Washington County voters supported overwhelmingly levies. So very good news there. PCC was on there as well. That's the the third one that was on in 2022. Next slide, please. So what's next? We will be coming back and having a conversation with y'all at your April meeting. So we wanted to plant some seeds and put some questions in your mind. You are more than welcome to to share your thoughts on these questions tonight. You're more than welcome to say, I want to think, I want to process, I want to ask some questions. I want to see what happens in the April work session. But what we want to do is have a conversation with the board and we're really going to be looking to your direction, right? What what what's our goal? What are we trying to achieve? Is our goal to maintain THPRD exactly as it exists today? Is our goal to maintain service levels as they exist today? Is our goal to go to pre-pandemic service levels? Is our goal to to have reduced service levels? You know, we need direction on what your what your feels are and where you think we should be heading as an agency. We need to lay out for you what the impacts of those choices could be. So right now, each division director has been working with their managers and they're putting together information about if in five years, we had to reduce, we had to live within a reduced budget, what would the district look like, right? So we'll be able to come to you in April and talk about, well, if we have to cut our budget by 21%, this is what the district would look like. This is how we'd be different. This is what we look like today. This is what a 21% cut could look like in five years. And we'll have the opportunity to talk about what is our preference. And it doesn't have to be, it's a spectrum, right? It doesn't have to be one choice versus the other. We could land somewhere in between. But we need to have some discussions about what is our priority, what are our goals? And what services do we want to ensure we're able to provide to the community within the resources that we have available to operate the district? We're also looking ahead. We know that we're having the Financial Futures Work Group look at all types of revenue enhancement opportunities. We know from our research and from our experience that an operating levy is the option that is most likely to secure enough funding to be able to close the gap that we've identified as coming. So at this point, what we would like to do is as part of that April work session is lay out for you, what could a levy option look like? So what would the timing for that be? What would the amount that maybe would need to be covered? How would we do public involvement? What would that process look like? We know that we would need community members to help be involved. We know that we would have a robust public engagement process. We know that there are pros and there are cons to a levy. We're very concerned about the cost sensitive nature of the to the community of what a levy option could be like. So we want to identify what are the downsides? And then we also want to articulate what are our strategies going to be to mitigate those downsides? Now that we've identified them, we have a responsibility to address them. So what are we going to do to address them? So that is the process. We don't want you to feel pressured. You know, our intent is to take much time, as as much time as we need to move through this process and to really focus on our strengths and what we have going for us. In terms of strengths, we've managed well through the last three years, three years, the revised operating plan. We've given ourselves time. You know, we're very lucky that we're coming out of the pandemic with some time to create our plan of action from where we go. And we're really going to be looking to the board to help us continue to set that course. So with that, we are down with a PowerPoint and happy to answer any questions that we can for you or take any feedback or advice you have to offer at this time.
Thanks, Holly and Aisha, so much. Tia?
Um, thank you so much for the presentation. It was very, very helpful. I I was wondering, I know part of the our revenue shortfall is because of programming and it's not back to up to levels. Has anybody run the numbers that if we're back up to the 2019 functioning levels and everything was back to normal with like all of our salary increases, how that budget would have looked like? Like, would we still be under in that we would need to go potentially for this levy if everything was functioning well and at full capacity again?
We we do know the the impact of implementing the the class and compensation study for this fiscal year at the number of staff that we have now, it's about $650,000. If we were fully staffed, every person was in their position on this new pay rate range. That number is about $1.8 million.
And then, so is it based on like if we were to function and fill all of our summer school, fill all of our class activities and swim classes, would that compensate for each other at the end of the day? Or are you still saying we're going to be way under budget?
Oh, Doug, sorry, you're muted.
Sorry, that was an excellent point I made, though.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, I think it's an excellent question because and we can bring that back for the April meeting. In context, it 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 won't make up the difference it needs to make up. It will certainly help. And it means we're we're back out into the community, but you know, along with every new class means we were fortunate enough to hire a part-time employee to teach that class. So the costs go back and forth. But it's a good question and I think, you know, we can, we can pull in that information to kind of show. Yeah, it may diminish the gap some, but it's not going to eliminate it by any means.
Perfect. And then it, uh, I was gonna, have we ever, or as we explore this option, have we thought about different, more sustainable operations that are more consistent? Maybe like childcare or full-time preschool or those kinds of things that is not necessarily every term we're trying to figure out, like who's going to sign up? Will there be enough to have these classes versus having something really set and consistent throughout the year to be bringing in constant income that's not as varying and we don't have to wait till after registration day to change everything again? Is that, are those kinds of like things going to be tossed out as far as like what we can do differently if we're going to be offering different things?
Sure. I I think that what we'd anticipate is that Julie and Sabrina can bring some of that information forward when we return to you next month. You know, we have a service assessment model that looks at as programs run, which ones are filling, which ones are really popular, which ones are not filling, which ones can we maybe divest from? And so we're we're constantly running that analysis. And I think we've talked about this. It's probably been a few months now. But one of the pandemic changes, for example, was to our after-school program. We were trying to grow that like crazy and in different sites prior to the pandemic because we were filled up at our rec centers. We only had a little bit of capacity at Garden Home, but we were, we were reaching capacity at these other centers and that was a great opportunity for us. But in the time since, the pandemic has changed things. More people are working from home, less people are demanding that after-school care. So childcare is different certainly from from that. But we are looking at all those different revenue-producing entities and finding out what we can staff for so that we can try and bring in additional revenue.
Yeah, I think I think one one thing if I could add to Tia is that that uniquely, you know, our part district is is made up of phenomenal diversity in terms of the population, the patronage that we provide services to. That results in a really great diversity of program opportunities. Now, certainly, the efforts of the program side, you know, condensing and combining, but but you also want to keep the context of quality of life is is enabling all parties to have that unique experience that I want, I want you to test this out. And and that's that thing. We we start people's interests. We don't have to take them to the. We don't have to take them to the high level of any activity they choose in. But, but that's part of what we do is we create opportunities for new experiences.
Yeah, and I, and I totally appreciate that and stuff. I was just more trying to think of a way to, right, like if we opened a preschool for little kids and had all of these opportunities that we already are giving, right? Like dance and art and all that kind of stuff, but at least had it more consistent or like at buildings that have less, you know, enrollment, like maybe Garden Home or something, if that turned into like a preschool instead. It would just be interesting to see, because I know preschool and childcare and stuff is a problem that we know is missing. So, um, not to say we would take off all enrichment classes, but maybe focus like a few buildings that we haven't opened or we can condense it and then that would fill other centers in that there's less centers that are providing these things. So maybe we're filling those, um, more also because of the economics of demand versus, um, supply. Um, but that's perfect. Uh, and then, um, is there, so I know our vision, action plan and everything task force was, you know, in the perfect world of everybody was happy, everybody, you know, was South Parks and Recs was out there, there's all these things. And now, right, as you've said, and as interests have changed and things have changed, we're kind of finding out that, um, people are not returning to that same sentiment or need. And so the change, our vision task forces, or our vision action plan is not necessarily quite as accurate as we had hoped for. It's a great guiding light for us, but is there a way to, while we're doing this, I know you talked about community engagement about the levy, but is there a way to also community engage of like what things are still important? What things, you know, like LC STIR is like a note, like we, nobody wants to remove something like that. But like if there's, you know, I don't, it like swim lessons, like those get, those are gone like within a thing. So those are something that, those are the things that are required. But like what else is it that the community wants or requires that they'd be willing to maybe increase their taxes for or not, right? Like if, if you ask me what I want, I want a thousand enrichment classes. But if you tell me I'm going to have to pay like a thousand dollars extra, then my story kind of changes a little bit. So, um, I don't know what kind of community engagement we can do for that part.
Yeah, so you, there's, Tia, you, you brought up a lot of really good points and I want to, I want to kind of address them separately. Um, philosophically though, I want to have a conversation with the board about how to interpret the vision, right? Because, um, uh, this is one I have a lot of feels about and some experience with in my prior life and here. And I have seen agencies, um, I think misunderstand the value of a visioning process, okay? So philosophically, the purpose of a really strong visioning process is to give you a good barometer and a good foundation of what people's priorities are. And remember, we asked really simple question, right? We asked, what do you want for the future of Park and Rec? What matters most to you? And we let them talk, right? We listened. And so I believe, and again, I've been around community visioning plans now. I can't do the math. I wish Jared was here doing the math for me on my years, but it's like fifteen plus years in my brain if I'm working it right. And they're meant to be fifteen to twenty-year plans. They're not plans that should ever be adopt, uh, relooked at, re-engaged every five years. If you're doing that, you're not, you're not spending your, your time efficiently or your money efficiently. And the reason is because they are so broad, right? And Alfredo, you made this amazing point in a board meeting a couple back where you said, let's not just stand on visioning. We have to be doing community involvement all the way through, right? Tia, that's what you're saying as well. And you're both right on that point. The vision is the picture of what the future is supposed to look like. The information within it serves you well today, even post-pandemic. Because it talks about things like diversity. It talks about things like access. It talks about things like environmental stewardship. And at a very high level, how you actualize that, you work through on your specific public involvement projects as you go, right? That's why when you saw us out at La Rais Park, we started with, we heard people said spaces should look like this from a big picture perspective. But how do you now want this one place to look? Because we've made some filtering based on what we've heard and now you get to customize that. That approach is how you should think of your visioning, uh, plan here on out. It is the beginning of the filtering process, but you constantly need to touch back in with the public as you're moving through changing conditions. So stand on that vision, be proud. You won a national award for a reason. It's good work. But it doesn't, it doesn't take away the need to continue public involvement as you go. I absolutely agree with you that we need to do public involvement as we go. At the end of the day, the most important thing is the conversation we have with the public, right? What are the challenges? It was really illuminating, you know, the conversation that the STIR Center patrons had with us, um, at your budget meeting. I had the same conversation that same week at a NAC meeting. And when I was able at the NAC meeting, um, to say to the, to the lady who asked the question, no, you know, did you know that other centers are closed weekends? Did you know other centers are closed Sunday? Did you know? And I was able to articulate all of the changes across the district. She had no idea. It completely changed her perception of the issue. And so I think what we need to do is take, we need to utilize our vision to say, this is what people expect from THPRD. This is what we look like today because of the funding shortfall. How do you want to look tomorrow? And we need to ask that question, right? We're not saying, go do a levy now. No, we're not ready for that. We are not there. We need to, we need to talk with the public about the reality of our revenues and our expenditures, the gap between. And we need to have some focused conversations with their input about what we want to look like in the future. And we'll do that through community surveying. We'll do that through a task force. We'll do that through a lot of public engagement and public involvement meetings. Um, because you'll need that information as you carry the weight of helping lead the district and make those big decisions. So I hope that helps.
It was super helpful. Thank you, Holly. Heidi?
I will be brief. Thank you for the information. And, um, seeing this from a, a number of different organizations and, and us now too. I mean, the truth of the matter, and you've pointed this out really well, Aisha and Holly, like wages and benefits is going to keep increasing. And we're seeing that in all public, probably private sector as well. And to have, you know, eventually eighty-five to ninety percent of your budget simply for wages and benefits, that's, um, something that we need to know is, is likely going to, is going to happen. Um, utilities aren't going down. We have maintenance costs. I mean, all of these things, like we could, we definitely can be creative in, um, programming and revenue generation. But I don't know that revenue generation in a creative sense is going to keep up with the costs as they're escalating. And I'm, I'm thinking of this in, you know, from multiple agency perspectives. And it's very telling that our local service districts and, you know, other insta, large institutions are, are going out for, you know, levies. And we're in a really good climate right now. Like those are really high positive return rates for those, those levies. Um, so I, thank you for sharing that information. It, it helped to reassure me. But I am not reassured that getting really creative about revenue generation is going to help us, um, meet the mark in keeping up with wages, benefits, utilities, maintenance, all of those things that we need to do. Um, I also just reflecting on what you were saying, Holly, about public involvement. Like we have heard a lot, not as much as I would like, but we have folks, you know, come and provide public testimony. Or we get the emails and the communication from our patrons and the public about what they want. They want more swim lessons. They want to open the swim centers. They want, you know, STIR Center open, you know, these periods of time. And, and we're struggling with staffing and all of these pieces. This right now is public engagement. Like this is public engagement now leading up to a levy opportunity. Like we can't do some of these things because we can't fund it and we can't staff it. So we need to do something. And I think that kind of community engagement is really impactful because the community wants these things, but we've got to also have their buy-in to be able to do it. Um, so just sort of reflecting on, on that piece of like, right now is the beginning of the public engagement. Or I mean, it started some time ago. Um, and having worked on levy campaigns and like, I, I'm, I'm excited about this opportunity for the park district. Um, I'm excited to hear more, you know, next month in our next meeting about what, you know, what some of the numbers are and some of the means by which we will go forth if we decide to go forth with a levy campaign. Um, and to note that the campaign is not like our personal campaigns. Levy and bond campaigns are very different in many respects. Um, and you've got, you know, forces behind us doing this. So, um, thank you for, for that. That was a little more long-winded, but I just, I feel, I feel optimistic about moving forward with a levy. I'm looking forward to hearing more about what we're thinking about dollar-wise and what the impacts will be to help us sustain and, you know, improve our service level hopefully too.
Thank you. Um, before we jump to the next question, I, sorry to be rude, I just realized I forgot a part of Tia's and I didn't want to forget to respond to it, which is, um, Jared did confirm that the five-year projection was based on full program utilization. So that twenty-one percent shortfall assumes full program utilization and assumes full staffing. So it is, it is where we will be if those conditions are met.
Thanks Holly and thanks Heidi. Alfredo?
All right, um, uh, let's see. So I will open by saying I believe that, um, any investment in, uh, THPRD, um, would be an extremely wise investment by the community. Um, it's a well-run organization with, uh, plenty to offer. Um, and, uh, is highly utilized. Um, I am, as a board member, I'm very confident and grateful in the staff who have the experience and the know-how to get, um, a hypothetical, um, uh, you know, a levy mechanism through, through the gates it would need to get through. Um, I think for me personally, where I'm at high level, um, at this point, which may help as you go on is just, while I know there's been, um, good success, this is a friendly, um, you know, voting area for these types of, of things. Um, I think where I'm at right now as a board member is, um, I would love to see, whi- which I know you're going to do anyway, but, um, kind of a yes and what can, um, be able to articulate? Yes, we need some additional investment to maintain what we are doing and what we have told you we are going to keep doing or we are going to do more of. Um, we are also going to do these five things to, on our end, to make sure we're shoring up, we're expand, we're doing things we haven't, you know, maybe done before in terms of revenue. Um, and then, um, you all will decide what, what makes the most sense. But I think there's, there's clearly some, you know, some knobs we can turn maybe that we've, we've not had to turn before that maybe there's other things you have to look at in terms of, um, how to do our part while at the same time asking the community to invest in us. Um, some of that is increasing this, some of that may be decreasing that. Um, but I think, um, from where is I, I would just think we, um, that would be something that I would want us to be able to articulate is that this, A, this is why we're a great investment if you don't already know. But B, we are taking this very seriously as well. And this is, these are the things we are doing to actively, kind of, um, address this on our end of the house. That being said, it will not be enough to get to, you know, we will need your help. We'll do this together. So that's where I'm at, um, high level. Just wanted to share that. Yep.
Thank you, Alfredo. Barbie?
Sure thing. And I'll try to keep this brief as well. Um, Holly, since you've asked for this to be a space where we can just, you know, share our feels, that's where I'm coming from is just wanting to share my initial reaction. And I think, um, the staff and all of y'all over the past three years who have worked so hard to keep up with this revised operating budget, almost in some ways, like we've done such a good job that this problem has been mitigated in a way that I don't think we necessarily, outside of this contingency, have done the greatest job of exposing what those realities are. And so while I'm incredibly grateful, we are so creative and can come up with new programming ideas and scale back from one big event to multiple. Um, to me, it feels marginal in terms of, um, solving this picture when I see it side by side and see zero in five years. Um, and we've come forward collectively as a board to say, we need to be sustainable. So I echo, um, Heidi's, some of your, your, your feelings and what you've shared in terms of this, this shortfall feels, um, much greater uh, than solving by having some additional swim classes. But I think to Alfredo's point, the, it's hard to then say it's, it's the conundrum that we're in of this catch twenty-two. We can open all the centers and sure, let's have twenty-four seven operating model. But at the same time, now we have all of the staff and all of the additional increase that comes with that. So we're, we're in a rub and I appreciate that we have some time to be thoughtful about it. And I think I'm trying to stand in the middle of my Venn diagram of wanting to live my values and ensure that we are continuing to be accessible, that we are continuing to be thoughtful around programming services for everyone. And at the same time, let the data show where that sentiment may be and, um, what those options are. So I have the utmost faith that y'all are the experts here, um, and coming back to us to continue to shape that narrative of, um, what these revised revenue enhancements could be and look like in addition to considering a levy. I think we've, we've got to be realistic about that shortfall and that we do need to do something. I'm just, excuse me, I'm just not sure, um, what that necessarily looks like. So I'm open to learning more and I'm appreciative of, of any and all data. Um, and, and trust y'all to do this, this hard work.
If I, if I could, Barbie, I just want to say one thing. You hit the nail on the head about the problem isn't necessarily easy to see because of the way we have worked so hard to focus on reopening and do as much as we can. So we're sending out a tea hose today, uh, tomorrow that will have a very similar message that you've, you saw in the employee update, talking about changes in operational hours. And we're going to be really super intentional right now in all of our public communications to keep sharing that story. It's a very different thing for THPRD because normally we're always, you know, talking about the great successes, the new parks we've opened, the new development. You know, the amazing comp plan that just got done. We love, we've got great programs and pictures and wonderful people enjoying. And we talk about that all the time, but you're absolutely right. It's time to start really daylighting this so people understand and can be informed and can, you know, decide for themselves what advice they want to offer the district. So we're going to do that. Absolutely.
Thanks Barbie. Thank you Holly and Aisha for such a thoughtful presentation that really led with the board's values. Um, everything my colleagues, extremely smart colleagues said is spot on. I know everyone's tired at seven thirty. Um, I think, you know, what I'm really struggling is with, what I'm really struggling with is that, um, what it means as a, a community member to live here, that what it costs to live here. And so that's always going to be hanging over my head and I acknowledge that in a growing community, in an organization that values pay equity and has centered that, uh, we have to make some really tough decisions. Um, what I'd like to see is realistically, I suppose, what are other options are, like as an example, I know that hiring a bunch of grant writers is not a realistic example. We can't make up that much money with a grant writer. What are our other options so that we can be as informed as possible when we make this decision? And like, I, I mean, the thought of closing facilities breaks my heart into a million pieces. And like what, what does that mean? Like I don't even know that that would solve this issue, right? Um, and so I just think we have to have a couple more, I mean, we definitely have to have a couple more conversations. And I, I just want to make the most informed decision as possible because yes, a levy might be the most realistic option for us, for what we need, for what, what infrastructure is in place for the, the community to, uh, address this issue and what are our other options? So that when we talk, so that if we decide to move forward with this, we can say like, we did explore. We explored some really tough conversations about what it would mean to, I mean, I'm going to say something ridiculous, cancel all swim classes. Like that's not a thing. Like what would that mean? Um, and so I, and, and helping the community understand, um, how to, why, why we are potentially leaning towards this option. I guess that, that's my thought process. I, I really appreciate, that was a great presentation. I'm like, I can't believe you guys are at that stage of all this. I'm just like, oh my God, y'all are such pros. I, I love the circles. That was very helpful for my visual brain. Um, so thanks, everybody very much.
Well, if I could just add final word, uh, um, you know, from the staff side of the deal, uh, Tia did have a peak preview, just so you know, and she helped us with it. Cause we didn't have the PowerPoint done for the rest of you, uh, but we met with TLS as it were. Uh, but that's the collective input. You know, I think when all said and done, you know, we've heard a variety of different subject areas. But you know, I, I think, um, we all have a vision of what the park district is and we know that it's, it's going to take something substantial. Uh, but the reality is, uh, to impact quality of life long-term, it, it is an investment. You know, I think Alfredo said it well. It is an investment in your community and, and we are, we're the right player to invest in.
I'll let you have the last word, Doug. Unless there's any other questions, um, Holly and Aisha, did you get enough guidance to continue the conversation?
Thank you. Yes.
Uh, there's nothing else on the agenda, so I wish everyone a lovely night. Please stay warm and safe and take care. We will see you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.